Thank you. Welcome everyone to the Autumn Annual Summer Town Council Belgium and fifth meeting set there on Tuesday, the twenty fifth of February. Six day and I please ask everybody to either turn off or make silent any more reports please. And there's more planned fire drills. Fire alarms do grow or follow drone. I'll be first. So we have a skitter and apologies for absence. We have apologies from Alan Jones, councillor Alan Jones, councillor Jeanette Stevenson, councillor Alex Clay. And there's a request for dispensation for three months for councillor David Tony. Do we receive an approval? Item three is declarations of interest. Is there any declarations of interest?
No.
Tremendous.
Thanks. There was one on the max as mine on the power house cutting rest on two of you this.
And no, I'm not very thinking I'm just. I don't know whether to, yes, I know which yeah, declaration of interest, so we thank you. And my concern. Yes, that's the easiest way to say that. Some pollution.
Are you putting declarations?
Anyone else?
No.
Item four on the agenda is welcome along tonight to Michelle and Sophie from Point North, formerly the Community Foundation.
So it's still the Community Foundation. So we were, we are Point North Community Foundation, formerly County Durham Community Foundation. So yeah, but we trade as Point North now. Because the reason being, nobody really knew what our community foundation was and it just created four words that nobody ever got right in the in your list. So there you go. Yeah. So thank you. I think I had a few of you certainly met some of you way back in twenty nineteen. So great to be back here in twenty twenty five and just talk through the fund. We can actually, we did bring something along, a bit of a summary. What we can do is circulate. I'm not sure we still brought enough. I think I may have underestimated. Yeah.
You and I can share this one. There's another one now.
So hopefully. It was really a bit of a summary as to where we are right now.
Okay, it's coming back round.
My buddies going to need another one there.
That's more than enough for seven, actually.
Okay, perfect. We can do enough.
Okay, the printing job is good.
For some of you who may not have been around in twenty nineteen, this was very much put in place. I think Carl was involved in some of the concepts. So thank you for kind of reaching out to us. And it was really around mobilizing some of the councillors' funds and trying to get it into community groups. So we have been running it since twenty nineteen. It's had a variety of different rounds. So today you guys are very kindly put two hundred and sixty thousand pounds into it. But today, over four hundred and sixty seven thousand pounds, three hundred and sixty six pounds have been awarded as grants. So I think one of the things that we as Point North wanted to do was really leveraging other funding and I hope we've managed to do that. So by bringing in the A A P, but also the Police Crime Prevention Office. We were able to bring in other funding through our Community Foundation membership, which is the UKCF money. And then we had some other donors. You'll all, I'm sure, probably remember Kevin Jones, who I understand is enjoying his retired life kind of thing. I don't know if anyone's met him recently. So Kevin has funds with us and he's very kindly and continuously supports the Stanley Fund through his donations. We put money into the fund as well and and then, yes, we have taken a contribution to cover our costs. But so far, question is, have you had a net gain from us in terms of our contribution? So you have had seventy five grants been made to forty seven application applicants. Based on all the impact data that we've had back. So when a group applies to us, they tell us what they're going to do with the money. They tell us who they're going to help. They tell us how many people they anticipate helping. Twelve months on or at a certain time relevant to their grant, they have to tell us who they did actually help, how many people they did really meet and serve or support. And give us a case story as well. So we've given you a few case stories as well, case studies. But I think the thing that we're most proud of, you know, there's a phrase in the funding world called cold spots. And Stanley for us was a cold spot as a funder. We got very few grant applications into us and we did nothing really to chase up and find the unknowns, if you like. Now, it's something that we very proactively try and do these days and actually, anyone who knows about the Welcome Spaces, that's been a fabulous project that we've actually delivered in partnership with the council. And it will typically bring us about fifty new groups a year, people that we just never heard of. So we love finding new groups. We failed in Stanley and we were lazy in Stanley. But actually, by having the fund, having a dedicated fund, we've really benefited from activity from community groups being stimulated. You know, and we've been able to bring now one point five seven million into this area to support community groups. And when you compare that that since twenty nineteen and when you compare that to the just under five hundred K in the nine years prior, I think that speaks volumes that we've managed to raise awareness, get funds out there and hopefully make a difference. Part of that was national watering money, so that we were able to leverage in to support the community. But I think if you look at it, we have over two hundred funds in our, under our management from different donors, forty three of those have supported activities in Stanley. That would have probably been really low previously with just a few local donors helping out now. The work that community groups do here is really recognised, it's welcomed and it's supported by a wide range of donors, probably many of whom have no local knowledge of Stanley, but when they see the applications coming in now, I really just cheer them. So I don't know if that, I kept it short and sweet, but I hope that's a useful summary. You do have about seven thousand six hundred and seventy nine pounds still left. There are certain donors' funds that will pop up in April because they're from pots of monies that are long term savings. As long as Donald Trump hasn't prolonged up the investment market, they should be in a really good place. And in April, we will be able to draw down those funds. And so people like Kevin Brown, Kevin Jones will be able to draw down more money and do more grant making. But as it stands at the minute, groups now in Stanley and the surrounding areas effectively fall into our community grants programme and we will support groups through that. And I hope you can help us continue to keep that awareness, keep them applying. I don't have enough funds to meet the needs in today's world. It's just bonkers where we are, if you want a very untechnical, unprofessional term. We were doing, we turned thirty this year in June and we were doing some analysis of our grants. And forty eight percent of our grant by value pounds has been in just the last seven years. Reflecting the times, sometimes I think that we're living brilliant that we can help. But we never seem to be able to find enough money to fund everyone. So I hope that's useful and we're both happy to take any questions. I am the CEO. I should have said that by introduction. Sophie is the one who's done all the hard work in recent times. But when I just said, are you talking through this? She went.
Sorry, I squeaked.
Shell has done the talking, but very much Sophie's hard work. And I know a number of people sitting in this room today, I thought some who have apologised, sent their apologies. They were on the panel.
Yeah.
And we really welcome that support. That was high quality.
Is anyone, have any questions? Hi, I was just wondering, will the the stone glass castle by the, will that still continue despite the fact that it's been repossessed?
I doubt that. It will. So the the local community networks, they are, aren't they? They're still going to have funding. I have seen one presentation on this. So there will still be community funding. They're going to try and do it. And I'm sure you guys know this better than me. So apologies if I'm murdering something that you know better. Whatever grant funding happens though, is to align much more with the inclusive economic strategy of County Durham. So I don't think so, is the honest answer, but we can but ask Dan. Dan's still your man, so to speak. Yeah. You know, Dan's been a great constant and been a great support. So we can but ask.
Yeah. Any more questions?
Can I just say thank you because I'm aware it was quite a contentious process that we went through as council. So effectively, I haven't paid for this back in the day and as we took the money welcome the councils and gave it over to Point North. And I still believe that was the best decision, the best thing to do and then boosting the funding with the amount of money that's been enriched in. And so I just want to say thank you really for on our key collaborations, it was at the time the council, it was probably in the top title. And all staff have been part of this because I know that alongside this grant being introduced in Stanley, we've also had some substantial cost to the infrastructure projects that would have been supporting community groups and some portion of it. And I know we go organisation pick up a lot of slack for that in terms of supporting groups with applications and the monitoring and the sort that comes with them, with a plan for a grant. And I think as a grantee, I've been part of it, has had numerous blasts. I can tell you that on the ground, this funding has been a massive difference to thousands of people's lives in Stanley as a direct result of the Stanley Fund. What the work we're doing, the organisation does. So you can piggyback back on the team as well. And we'll continue to have a presence in Stanley, with work in Stanley. I'm sure all the councils and they'll continue to be in touch and samples, groups to you and you will help where you can. And but I just, I think it's been a brilliant project and I think some stats of fantastic policy, the expectations that I have on this episode.
Thank you for trusting us to do it. And I think I think it's taken us on a journey as well, in a sense, because the team now have to do, do you get weekly or four nights a day?
This is the funding phone in. I was going to say that if you do have anyone that you'd like to refer to us for a chat, if anybody's not confident about funding, you've got somebody who's interested in applying, but they're not sure where to start. We're always happy to have a chat over the phone. We host funding phone ins every week on a Thursday lunchtime. But we'll also, if you ring us, we'll pick up the phone and we'll have a chat.
Yeah. That has changed about the foundation as well in the last, you know, six, seven years, type of stuff. We're here. We're here to help people and there's no point sitting on money if you don't do good with it. So thank you for trusting us with your funds. Hopefully you have and take a few kind words. And do keep encouraging groups to come to us and we'll do our very best.
You're more than welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you for having us.
Item agenda, item five, additional announcements. Since our last meeting on the twelfth of February, we had a British Museum where John Greaves and Marie came up from where, where was it? Was it Yorkshire, Bonsley? Because the the gorilla, the napkin store, I think you'll have always seen the story and it was like a repair shop to me. And they wanted it to be returned to Stanley. And we went and presented with it for it's been put into British Museum, into the Pitt Village. And it's pride of place in one of the, one of the display cases, which I thought was very nice. We came up, had travelled and all that, to bring the napkin up. So it's on display now in British Museum. On the fifteenth of then, I was back at British Museum for the commemoration service for the anniversary of the West Stanley Pitts Asset. Beautiful service and all the touching and all the shudders, sort of going around the names. All the lines and died. Lovely, lovely service. And then the following day, on the sixteenth, we had our service at the Remembrance Day at the Pitt Rio. Lovely turnout. Thank you to. Many thanks to Alex for all the hard work and organising it. Thank you, Alex. Look up, we can go. Because she's, she's spent a lot of time and hard work she's put in to these events and arranging for Jean Marie to come. And thank you to everybody who supported the events. Next thing is the leaders' report. Jeanette's not here, so we won't have a leaders' report. Item seven is the European Chief Officer, Brittany Morgan.
Good evening, everyone. This last month, it's been quite busy. And I know because you know, all the whole be very busy because you have moved a lot of meetings into sort of this last month. You know, we have had the event working group, the allotment committee, the community engagement working group, the quality working group. My husband, Alan Shaw have also attended the election training, which has been really useful. We've had some training sessions with Jocke as well this month, which have been really useful. The speed up day, which had a lot in there under it. Those days are really helpful. You know, we are trying really hard to sort of improve everything we do and those sessions have been invaluable. So it's a great thing. I'm also going to the Child Poverty Roundtable, which of course is, it's not just Stanley, but it's the whole of the North East. The donor community partnership day and we've made a lot of connections as well with people there who want to come and support Scots the way they were doing in Stanley. And the Stanley Front Street Partnership. We've had the Armed Forces Committee. And in terms of the events, obviously we have and thank you to Alex again for a lot of the work that she's done. There's been some, I would say a lot of new things that she's, that she's managed really well. The Soviet Beamish, which was really, really lovely. And I think the people who donated it were really happy that it ended up on permanent display in Beamish, which was what they wanted, which we couldn't promise obviously because it's not our museum. So they were really happy. The service in the chapel on Saturday was incredible, incredibly moving. And the efforts as well that our, you know, friends of Beamish put in to organise and to help the young people reading out the names and the speakers, I just think was incredible. And I think sort of those two events have gone along, I think, to cementing all that relationship with Beamish, the future, future work that we're doing. The Stanley Memorial on Sunday, we had the choir again for Beamish and that really added, I think, some things to that memorial. I was away last weekend, but I did the Tampeal Railway three hundred on Sunday on my car. So she had her ride on the train, which was wonderful. And I think it is about us supporting those local organisations that do an awful lot to really stand out in Stanley, fantastic organisations. So, you know, I think we would like to continue to do more, obviously, with them. So thank you.
Item eight, public participation.
Then we've got two questions. We have two questions have come in from residents of Stanley. We have a question, it's a little about cars being allowed to drive and park on Stanley Front Street. There's a witness to car reversing on the street where pedestrians are walking. And they approached the, there was a John County Council Warden who directed to us to ask about the, whether, you know, about them being allowed to drive and park on Stanley Front Street. So that's one question that has come in. We're working on a response for that.
Sorry, can I ask a question? Why are the wardens referring to us?
Yes. Yes. Well, I've got.
Wardens number?
No, that's all we got. They didn't have any other details. So we've been right to the right place.
So sorry, through you, Jay. Can I just say that some, some of this occurs because some of the shops at the top of the street now have no back access. They can't unload anything, unload anything. The forest, the pizza shop, well, the shop doesn't care because it's it's an estate agent, so they don't, but they do come up down the street. And also the chemists on the other side, they have theirs, they have their deliveries to the shop. The reasons, I don't know why, but our favourite saving reasons. But that's, they should be, they're the only ones because everybody else has access down there. And.
Sorry. So what we keep that hold of partnerships as well by the rules is that it's still technical. It hasn't been stopped being more to the technical.
It was stopped, that's, I mean, sorry, it was stopped traffic. Don't say this. But yes, in nineteen eighty something.
Exactly. It's still there, partner. And it is still technical, so they're having all the laws on. Some government departments, when our front street was pedestrianised, didn't go about it in the right ways. And that's why they can't stop anybody from driving and doing this. I think just all the technicalities, that's what we told them.
This is passing the, that is come up in the past.
I was just going to reiterate what has already been said. I was a resident of the pain when we were told by the police that something was amiss and that basically for all its pedestrianise, it's not and they've got no force or ability to remove the cars or stop the car. So I don't worry, there's something that we can, somebody we can ask. Yeah, because the stopping of order, I think that's what it was called. Yeah, stopping of order. Yeah, it was when it's, that's the reason they can't look from the bottom of the street. It was decided by the Secretary of State, it can only be decided by the Secretary of State.
And then we have another question, which we've announced in the assets that we have. Were there certain assets that if it's all right to come to town? So now I've got the information. So two large reindeers and they're stored in our current premises. Just a question about where, so it might were, I think, from the civic hall. One tall soldier stored in the current premises. The ceiling projector, which is also stored in our current premises. Large television, which is fixed on the hall in the meeting room at the greenhouse. And the screen, a projector screen, and that remained in the two outside of the hall. I will make sure that goes on, sends to the rest of the members. Thank you.
Moving on to item nine, confirmation of the minutes. You'll find those in the chat in your app. And you are asked to approve a true record. Thank you. And item ten, receipt of the community minutes, the catchment fee. Receive the Lord's Quadruple from the fine house in January, which was out of the floor in the January. Those are just two noise. Then there's the allotment committee to approve this true record and sign the minutes of the allotment committee in the year, which was out on the fourth of February, twenty twenty five. Do you have any allotment committee members?
Yeah, all those.
Helen, are you, Helen, do you approve them? Have they been called in?
Yeah, well, yeah.
Lee, do you want to send these minutes? Move on to item eleven, the various planning applications. Anybody for any questions on any planning applications that we said around? Item twelve, updating German ten chemistries. Carl, do you want to go?
The other budget set meeting on last Wednesday, it's on YouTube. If anyone wants to watch it, follow our discussion or relive the, isn't the highlights clip yet? I'll be able to follow it at some point. So the budget's been the main focus of the council. Obviously, there's been some extra money from the government, thirty forty eight million pound, what council continues to be as massive cost pressures. And it's protecting the significant funding deficit over the next few years, which the new council act of mail had to reject very quickly. There was a whole lot of political discussion around whether some decisions we were going to go on that, don't need to do them tonight. I think in terms of some of the rightists, we sell financial, Sam Dott, the last bit of money from our county council budgets supporting, thinking positive, I just want to act towers and boys club as well, as well as Beamish Football Club. To get there started with the next year's intake of supporting around about children and young people over the first year in the U M, in the football, three access down in the forward centre. So the final project we funded was a trip to Parliament for a group of children, young people from Burnside, private school as well. Who would come down over the Easter holidays, I mean. And I followed some work within a week where we were working on the case at the school, just like with democracy, being and things like that. So when we showed them a picture of Westminster, they didn't know what it was. And that's kind of shocking. So many children, young people from our community, we say we never ever get the experience to visit somewhere like that. So I was around one fifteen year sixes from Burnside going down there. And so that was positive. But I think in terms of, we've launched a new project, Beamish Football Centre with the foundation of the right in the work with. Football Centre with the Foundation of the Light, who have worked with Durham University, New College Dome. And they've already worked with the boards, having a presence in the building for around five or six staff. Is the Stanley permanently, um, five days a week, do all sorts of mentoring with, um. Sort of young people who are in educational training, um, as well as delivering quite a lot of credit areas. Adult learning as well from there, so called a bit of an education hall, and also learning curve. And we agreed in partnership with learning curve, just to, um, deliver some more credit training. Through their, um, college structure, so commonly learning home during the day, which is, um. Positive, um, and we're expecting that next year we'll be training over five hundred adults from Stanley for more. Credit trains across that learning partnership. And I think the final thing I wanted to mention was, we're continuing to work with the venue, obviously advise partnerships in there. And I was supporting the trustees for the number of different projects, including, of course, new volunteers and trustees, if anybody's interested. That was correct.
Thank you.
And you, like, how you managed to go on there? Actually, it's not council, they were in town council, they, but I was invited by the town council to attend the memorial, probably good to do. Will be an art form church, um. The, the building is built with, and it's open to the community as well, so I'm very keen to engage with the community and support the community projects and you don't have to be. Involved in church to do that, so they just want to be to pass the message on and say, you know, please come and have a look around. If you, you know, use the opening, they're very ready to do that.
Thank you.
There's only one, one of the one that I would like, just to, to the town council, put it in a Facebook post out. About, um, application for bringing artwork, so it's for Lunié. So, you know, if any of the groups are interested, you can contact the community via the link and, um. It should be good. And I've seen some of the, some of the groups have done before and they're actually very good.
Quite much for that. We'll move on to item thirteen. And and there's a request that if members could agree and approve. The request to bring forward the next full council meeting, which was supposed to be held on the twenty fifth of March. But we would like to hold it on the eighteenth of March. Councilors agreed?
Yeah.
Item fourteen, the annual meeting as a council. As we're in an election year, the annual meeting of the council must be held between the dates of the seventh of May to the twenty second of May. And we are asked to decide a date. Do you have any suggestions, a clarity? Um, there's been a suggestion for of the thirteenth of May. Call that meeting, is everybody happy with that?
I mean, I'd be here, so.
Yeah. And the annual town meeting, well, that's going to be the same. Members agree and approve, the date has been suggested, the twenty first of May, twenty twenty five, six o'clock.
Have you just got a question, councilwoman, you need to answer that.
Soon as you have, I knew it was, that light's going to. It was in the fifteen. Item sixteen is to allotment association spend, you'll find that out of the chapter in C. Councilors asked to, asked to approve recommendations. From the Finance and General Purposes Committee, we've spoken to the association, they were spending in line with the allotment plan and bridges. Agreed? All's agreed, I'm thirty seconded, over. Item seventeen is the events recommend, recommendations, your client attachment fee. Council has requested to approve recommendations in the finance and general purposes. And we ask someone to approve.
Yes, I'll just comment there, I mean, obviously, I think this is the most influential thing about the tenant. And all the, uh, crews, really, the chief officer, the finance officer, um, I've got to make sure to put, can I just? Make sure that it's something that they're about, quality, not just cost as well, right?
Yeah. You want to?
Yeah.
Soon as that approved. I can run on this new hand. Yeah, I'm glad we've been, seven, seven. Item eighteen, proposal of the event plan, council to see. Presentation proposal of the twenty twenty five event thousand.
So he also have a little handout with a brief plan of what we've got proposed. The twenty five, it's one that went through the events working group, finance and general, but it's just some more information for it. And there's quite a few events listed on there, the ones I'm just going to go, the V E Day, Armed Forces Day. Activity Week, V J Day, Mining Heritage and Christmas, because we usually do all the services anyway, so we don't really need to go and deal with that, it's just the same thing. And V E Day, so we've got the eightieth anniversary of Victory in Europe coming up. That is in May. The official proposal that we've received is to do the flag at nine thirty, have some pink parties and light beacon, half nine at night. We've chatted with the Armed Forces Committee that we've got the same situation that we were in last year, it's not going to be viable to do it off night at night. So proposal is to hold a similar event to what we did with D J A, linking with the community centres and care home, have some music, have some food. And add a new plaque to the beacon wall as well, ideally, if of course. We've got a put cost of about a thousand pounds for that, so that's about what came out with last year, so just gets us a bit of leeway and straight trade goes. Next one, uh, probably one of the biggest ones, Armed Forces Day. Um, proposing to replicate twenty twenty four, but to add a little bit extra, some more scores, uh, try and get uniform services involved more in the local community. Budgets to remain the same for that one as last year, but we can get a grant for that, so the cost does come down when, if it's approved. And we'll continue working with Armed Forces Committee and any of the previous contacts and community groups as well. Next one after that, the activity week. It was in favor of some events working group and then following the finance, general purpose, continuous format that we did last year. So remaining the same budget. But we're looking to work with partner organisations, Callum Holmes, Beamish Museum, keep up the partnerships that we've got. They could potentially add to the events, potentially sponsorship, but even if they could just bring in any of the groups activity wise, that would be great. And my suggestion is look into food provision for it and transport, because I know transport do come up in there, so we try and see what we can do for that. And then you've got V J Day, so Victory in Japan. Keep this on brief, it's the same proposal as the V E Day one, so don't really need to go into that one. And then Mining Heritage, so we used to previously do mine a Sunday. Think it would be good to try and do something similar, it doesn't have to be mine a Sunday, can take any different format. Could link in with a place like Beamish, they've got huge spaces, so why can't we work with them, try and get their miners association involved. Got secure location if Beamish do want to be involved, but could score in either format, but smaller events, one single event. I know we've got contact with John now, he does sessions, two people speak to children about mining heritage, so we'll be filling him up him back up. And could potentially be funded, can't guarantee it, but something that I can definitely look into. Last one, I know it's only February, Christmas. Yeah. So current proposal is to hold a similar event with twenty twenty four, we can slightly change this, could potentially look at doing a Christmas market or just moving it all together. And we're allocating the same budget as what we did last year at ten thousand pounds. Any big questions?
Trangri? And obviously it was mentioned potentially getting community groups involved with, if you want to do the show and, about it, for Christmas. And like a possible option, so the youth, the bands and stuff like that.
Yeah, it could definitely be an option in terms of if they want to sell anything or anything like that, we need to look at that separately for right licensing. But it's definitely something, if we can get our community involved, it'd be much better.
Did you want to?
Just to, I'm feeling it, Alex, is the, also the year of anniversary, is the beacon life, and I agree with you, not many people saw it turn out, maybe, right? Is that part of a national beacon life?
Yeah, so that's come from Bruno Peaks, who's the pageant master for the entire V E Day, V J Day, all of that one.
Uh, can I just suggest that we just keep that option open? Because I think if we put a beacon on the front streets, on the door lighters. And all the beacons have been lit around, we're going to do a ceremony with, you know, there'll be people who will want to commemorate that.
Yeah.
And I think we need just maybe just ask the events working group and review that going forward, and what's horrible for people might have to work with it. Probably not as horrible as people who sacrifice themselves.
Yeah.
Troy? I, I think if we're really, I think we need to inform Bruno Peaks, because they're obviously the one thing on the, the website, they're wearing lightness, you know, so if you don't inform them then. It wouldn't need it, it's a just, you know, but I think we should inform them, I think should like.
Pass second round.
Any more questions? Thank you for that, Alex. Well, as I mentioned, we have a pitch. Item nineteen, members initiative for English. Sold through the council special room for room.
And we, uh, just, I'm. Oh, yeah, yeah, so apologies for this half vocal council and not being too, you've got to remember that. And it's due just to the timestamp and everything, so apologies for that. So there's one more, always going.
Yeah.
Well, right, so also it's got, I've got a lot of, so you do now, nice.
Sorry, sorry, they will not make it easier, I mean, has anybody got any objections to any of these? The answer is no.
Tomorrow is going to be very.
Sometimes it's like. I miss you, Travis. I was walking that one. I'm sure. I can move on to item twenty, which is election preparation practice, I'm hoping.
Yes, yes, we just can see that we are obviously preparing the election, we have previous meetings for training, we will make sure that everything is, um, to the line. With what we're supposed to do and if anybody has any questions, obviously, that's now, but we just keep going, so.
Minutes, item twenty one, date and time and venue for the next thing. And due to the change of the Tuesday, the eighteenth of March, six thirty at Crafthead Village Hall. And item twenty two, in the exclusion of the present public.